Good morning, welcome to our Wayne County Board of Commissioners meeting. This is a meeting from a recess from last Tuesday. We recessed the meeting because of, we thought we were going to have a hurricane, but you know, we dodged another bullet. So today, we, our agenda is still for August 4th, even though it's August 6th. I want to welcome all of you here this morning. I'd like to remind everyone, if you will, to silence your cell phones at this time. We are trying to, trying to adhere to the COVID-19 restrictions as much as we can. We got another five weeks, according to our governor, that we need to be under this. So, we're going to do the best we can, if we're comfortable with what we do as individuals. At this time, I have, if you notice our agenda, your chairman today has got double duty. I have the invocation, so at this time, let's bow our heads, please. Dear God, we're thankful that we're able to come together in this country that we call the United States of America. We ask Father that you might continue to bless this county, bless these commissioners, bless all the leaders in our state as we move forward in dealing with the issues that are before us. Father, we ask that you might, would give us the wisdom to lead each and every day according to your principles and not ours. We ask Father that you might would share blessings upon those that protect us and our properties. We ask Father that during this time, that when we look at our country, that I ask a special request of you, Father, that you might would reunite our county, our state, and our country, and yes, our world, that we would share the principles that you, our Creator, have put before us. Father, we know we can't solve these problems, but Father, we know you can, because you're our Creator. You know how to fix these problems, we can't do it. So we're asking you, Father, that you might would give us the blessings, and we're asking that you might would bring us together as a country, that yes, our families may be put back together, that we can be a full family unit, among any other things that we see our country headed to today. We ask that you might protect all those that are protecting our country and our properties. And today, I do ask for a special blessing on our first responders, our EMS, our law enforcement people, that are being attacked by some groups for defunding and other things. Father, we need a coming back to you here in America. And Father, we know that you are the answer. Be with us as we move forward. May we put our trust in you and not in ourselves. These things I ask in your name, amen.
Ms. [inaudible] please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, we have approval of the minutes from July 21st.
Mr. Chairman, I move approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes from July 21st. So are there any discussions or changes? All in favor of approval, raise your right hand, please. Okay, motion carries. Discussion and adjustment of the agenda, Ms. Honeycutt?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. No changes to the agenda at this time.
Okay. Any commissioners have any changes? Have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor of approval of the agenda, raise your right hand, please. Okay, motion unanimous. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Honeycutt, you have any comments you want to?
It's just, under special presentation, it's just a joyous day for us, as we're able to recognize the life and service of Joe Gurley to this county. And very proud to have known him, very proud to seen his legacy of work throughout the county, his 30-plus years working for the county, and just very lucky and blessed to have known him. So with that said, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. Mr. Acoff?
Just thank you for the Gurley family being here today. It's a great loss. Joe was a great person, he was a great friend. I probably knew him as longer, longer than anyone else on this board. Went through some difficult times. The storm we had this past Bundy was not our first one. Thank God that it was not as bad as some that we've had in the past. But Joe, I mean, I can just picture us now over in the old building across the street. There was times, we spent a week there, we didn't even go home. I don't, I don't know how we stood to stay around each other that long, but he, there was times that, Blair, you were there, there was times that there was chaos. Joe Gurley never lost his cool. He never lost his cool. He, we didn't realize it at the time, that he was, he held things together in his own way, and you know. Y'all know his ways better than we do, but he was, he was very crafty in the way he handled things sometimes. He could, he could lead you, and you didn't even know he was leading you. But this is, this is fitting that this building be named after Joe. I mean, Dana, you know, Joe started at the bottom and worked his way up. Everything that, that we can say about him today, he worked for it. I probably shouldn't say this, but I will. Joe Newgorodiskeleton was buried, and who put him there? This, he knew Wayne County. Again, just thank y'all for, for being here, and God, I miss him. I miss him.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any, any other commissioners? Mr. Payton?
I know Joe never really sought the limelight, if it's not Joe, and he would have probably talked about this, but, because he and I had some discussions like this. But I thought about it when I saw his birthday on Facebook, and I can't talk about what Mr. Acoff said, but this is an appropriate birthday present for Joe. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Dohler.
I can think of no better tribute to a fine gentleman and a life that he lived and served the community of Wayne County than naming this building after Joe. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Any other comments? I agree. You know, Joe was still Director of Emergency Services when I became a commissioner. And start off with Joe and I sort of had our Jesus meetings, if you will, you know? But you know, you had to get to know Joe a little bit. Once you got to know him, and tried to figure out what made him tick, because sometimes you didn't really know, you know? But you always knew where he stood. He'd always tell you the truth. And he would always do what he said he was going to do, if it was within his power. So after a year or so, and he became a commissioner, we actually became pretty good friends. Well, I actually say good friends, because we served on a lot of committees together. This is the most appropriate situation to honor him than I can think of. Any other comments? At this time, Mr. Acoff, do you have a motion?
Make a motion that, a resolution honoring the life and legacy of A.Joe Gurley, the naming of the 911 Center in honor of a friend, Joe Gurley. That's in form of a motion, sir.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Are there any other comments or questions? All in favor of approving the motion to name the 911 Center after A.Joe Gurley III? Raise your right hand, please. We are unanimous, and at this time, I would like to, and I won't ask Commissioner Acoff, since he and Joe are childhood friends, and of course, being in the fire service, I won't want him to be a part of, my part of the presentation that I want to share with the family at this time, and I think we need to get in front, don't you, Carol? Okay. All right. Ms. Honeycutt?
This is, this is a, this is a plaque for what it's going to look like, the 911, Wayne County, 911 Emergency Operations, A.Joe Gurley III. What a fitting tribute.
Did y'all say what I'm saying, and say you left the site?
Whether it was at the church, whether it was emergency services, whether it was county to make sure my father-in-law was a lack of service. And he loved his community, he loved his county, he loved the emergency management personnel all over the county. Even after he retired, he stood with you and was there supporting, had an outstanding team around him, and this is a true honor. And hopefully, when people walk by the building and see it, they'll remember his legacy of service to this county, and hopefully, there'll be a lot more Joe Gurleys stepping up to the plate to serve our community. Thank y'all very much.
We thought it was cool, and we were a little bored at the EOC and sitting over there. Yeah. But when he would be gone for quite a while, we used to go out a couple of times.
Thank you so much. Yes. Flare, you have, I want to leave you out, because you're not, people were closer to him than he and Red Stop. Have you got, did you like sites?
Yeah, probably got several sites. You were talking about he knew where all the skeletons were, and I know, I got to shove them. That was my job, he told me where to put them. I mean, I could talk for hours on him, but one thing that he always taught me was to be humble and to respect the people around me, and that's the kind of stuff that you take with you for life. And he was just a mentor, I came to work with him as a young dumb kid, and he certainly shaped and changed my life for me, and it's been a pleasure to know him.
And one of the things that Joe did, he could put you in a position sometimes that you got to credit for, and he didn't, he didn't want it to credit for, but he could put you in a position that you, that would further your abilities and advancements. And, I mean, he was, and Joe Gurley's, he could get his way and make you feel good by that. Now, really, he had, he had that personality, that he just makes you feel comfortable. And, you know, from now until Jesus comes, he will be with us.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We can't.
No, sir.
Between, you know, we've, we've been in a, I don't know what the word, not awkward, but I guess an honor. We've lost two commissioners while we've been sitting on this board.
Yep.
And we had the honor of naming buildings after both of them.
Yep.
And, and you know, Mr. Bale got to see his name on a building, and I'm so thankful that it happened before he passed away. Wish it could have been the same for Joe, but Joe did see that building get started.
He did.
So, and he, he had a lot of input in that building, but you know, we just, you don't sit on many boards when you, when you bury two of your friends. And John Bale and Joe Gurley, they were true friends.
Yep.
And I really missed the intense fellowship with Commissioner Bale.
Yeah, and I miss, I miss Commissioner Bale, when he sat down there, he'd always back off, hold it phone. He used to do that, and I said, man, I tell you what, you rubbing it in, Mr. Bale. Any rate, thank y'all, and at this time, we're going to move on with our public comments time. Do we have anyone in public comments?
Not that I'm aware of, sir.
Okay. We're checking to make sure.
No, sir.
Nope, no, okay. All right, declare the public comments time closed. Mr. Honeycutt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next on your agenda is our consent agenda, and it's towards where we went over this at our eight o'clock briefing. If there's any questions or concerns, we'd like to offer this for approval.
What's the preference of the board?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda. Are there any discussions or questions? Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. Okay, we're unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And under new business, is a motion to approve utilizing the seal bid process for bidding out the 2021, 2023 fiscal year Wayne County farm leases. And on page 84 of your agenda is a list of those properties, and with your approval, we would like to do that bidding for lease as a sealed bid process.
Okay, what's the preference of the board?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. Okay, motion unanimous, motion carries.
Next is county manager's comments. I do want to, we have Aaron Siker here, our emergency management director, wanted him to kind of discuss about how we did under Hurricane?
Isa.
What he said. So, but I'll bring Aaron up and kind of give an update of what happened, and I've got to get some comments that I have on my computer that I'll be right.
Craig, I just read his email.
Oh, okay, well, I've got, I'll be right back.
Good morning, gentlemen. So I've been here just over a year now, and very short amount of time, I've realized that there's some very big shoes to fill over in emergency management, so for the Jeffries building, but we're going to keep trucking forward and keep making improvements. So, regards to Tropical Storm/Hurricane Isa/Isis, I'm hoping I pronounced that correctly. We started tracking that last week, again, the predictions coming in from the National Weather Service, National Hurricane Center, North Carolina Emergency Management, and then taking that information and passing along to county agencies, and then finally, on Monday morning, right before the storm hit, having the last municipality meeting and community stakeholders. So the biggest challenge that we had this year was, we were watching the track of that storm, and we knew we would have to open up shelters. The biggest challenge was COVID-19 and the PPE. So Department of Social Services, Health Department, facilities, and the schools, they all really worked really hard to make sure that they were able to take in anybody. We only ended up having 11 people in our shelters, but we were, we were prepared for more. So one of the concerns that our shelter crews had was being able to expand out into the schools, to, in the case we had a confirmed case, enter the school, have a place to isolate them, and so we can get them out. And quick phone call to the school district, and that was taken care of. So we prepared for a much larger event, and obviously, it turned into being a minor event. We got, we got lucky, there were some counties out there that got hammered pretty hard. With that being said, I think the danger now is the complacency, is with all, I guess, hype that was up in front of this one, we can't get complacent, and people kind of stand down a little bit, because the next storm could be that category five hurricane that parks on us and stalls for two or three days on top of us. So we're continuing pushing that message of stay at home, which a lot of people did, shelter at home, and we're thankful for the community for doing that. During the height of the event, we had, according to the National Weather Service, we had a maximum wind gust of 46, 47 miles per hour, and received about three and a half inches of rain, then more rain actually in the northern part of the county this time than the southern part. So we really had a successful Lent, activated the Emergency Operations Center on Monday, had the state of emergency, and then we were actually able to stand down and close everything by about quarter after seven on the 4th. So all around, communication was pretty good, opened up the shelters, EOC operations, and all the way through with the fall through and shutdown. So everybody, great job involved. Questions or?
Anybody have any questions?
I just, a comment, just want to thank everyone over at the Jeffries building, not only you, but everyone else. Things went smooth. And from what I'm hearing from different agencies in the county, they really appreciate the information that they're getting now, not only storms, but the COVID, and y'all are doing a fantastic job on getting the information out to the agencies that need it. I've heard nothing but, but good. 911 Center, very enlisted, very professional. Don't know how some of the crews on the trucks can keep their cool sometime, but they put in some very difficult positions sometimes, but they all are very professional, very professional. Thank y'all for what you do. Y'all are what makes us look good. Y'all, I mean, really, y'all make us look good. Thank you.
Mr. Payton?
Finished? Okay. No, I just wanted to reiterate what you said, we don't need to be complacent. We were very, very lucky, and I think we all recognize that. We could have been Oak Island, we could have been Windsor, and even in the northern states, got hit harder than we did. I was just shocked when I woke up at 2:30 in the morning, looked down, and said, ain't nothing going on here in Wayne County. But we were lucky, and I still appreciate that you still got to prepare, as we were going to be hit, just like the other places were.
Yeah, that's the last images I saw when the storm was up at the North Carolina-Virginia border. There were storms starting up in Toronto, Ottawa, Montreal, so this storm went all the way up the eastern seaboard.
And it's amazing, the strength that it had after being on land so long. I was just amazed. Because, you know, thanks for what you guys did.
Yes, sir.
And I certainly second that. Thank you for what you, what you're doing and what you have done. And you're right, we don't need to get complacent, because it's coming again. But we learn every time we go through this. My understanding is, is that the other departments, like the Health Department, DSS, and others, Mr. Manager, I understand that that went pretty well. I know that DSS, for example, was concerned about the shelters because of the COVID restrictions that the state had put on them, but I understand that that actually went pretty well.
It was, and I was able to get both shelters in. It was interesting to see the protocols that they put in place to make sure to check in and make sure the temperatures, and making sure that there was distance, social distancing between people, and also the safety that we did for the PPEs, for our employees as well. So a lot of thanks also to our school system. You know, they worked with us on meals as well, even though we didn't have really any meals, but, but they were ready. And just a great, great effort all around, and again, especially in the age of COVID, it was a good, another trial run. It was a trial run last year under Doran, it's a trial run, but we're getting much better every time that we do this. So, so when the big one does come, we'll be ready. And a lot of thanks to Aaron and the staff over at OES, all these guys back here.
Yeah. Ms. Honeycutt?
Ms. Payton? I'd also like to put up, thank our Public Affairs Department. It was, we were one of the few counties that the media covered. I mean, and that, that's, and the reason that they were covering us is because we were putting out such an effort to, to have things under control. But I know we were on at least two networks on what, on what Wayne County was doing, and that speaks highly for our Public Affairs Department to getting the information out that Andrew gets to them.
And Joe did a wonderful job. I think there was one at the shelter that they showed the check-in process, and they showed Joel as if he was a person being checked in, and also, he did a couple of other interviews with TV stations, so he did a great job.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you, Aaron.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Also, did ask that our, Dr. Brenda Wise, who is our Health Director, for an update, and she couldn't be here this morning, but she did send me this email that she wanted me just to give an update on community testing for COVID. We have completed eight community testing events for COVID and have tested about 1,200 residents. Our average community positivity rate is 6%, so this is less than the state's rate of 10%. They are working with the State Department of Health and Human Services to organize additional COVID testing for the vulnerable populations in the community, and we have also awarded our COVID community partner contract to the United Way. And again, they're going to assist the Health Department with contact tracing, outreach, and education. So again, we appreciate the United Way and the work that they're doing as well within our community. So again, COVID is still ongoing, but I do appreciate the work that Brenda's done as well. The other thing I did want to update y'all, which is actually some good news, and this is from- this is from Allison. Uh, our debt financing that the board approved, uh, at our last meeting, uh, was on the LGC agenda for Tuesday, and it was approved with no problems. So, uh, we are looking at closing on our $10 million debt, uh, by August 20th.
Good.
And that's all I have at this time.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, uh, this time we have, uh, the Board of Commissioners, uh, committee reports and comments. Um, let's see, where do I need to start? I'm, I'm gonna start with your freshman.
With the new guy.
Yeah, I always, I always put you on the spot first, Carson Harrison.
I was sitting here thinking about the hurricane last night, and, uh, Commissioner Gurley. You know, he and I met through politics, but we became friends through adversity. The man was always present for a phone call, he was always present to answer questions. And I became like the mayor of, of Grahamville. So he and I had a lot of conference calls. But I, I think what we did here today was a wonderful thing, and I'm in the building for it. And that's basically what I have, I have to say. And you guys did a great job, really great job. I stayed up to 3 o'clock reading your, your test messages, listening to the wind, and, you know, it was great to be able to see what was going on, and have someone inform me of what, where things stood.
That's right. Thank you.
Mr. Jankow.
Uh, about said everything I have to say. Well, yeah, and I, I, I kind of cut out a place for about a week. I just, I left, went on vacation, uh, and had to have a little time alone. Uh, but again, I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for letting me be a part of, uh, presenting that to the Gurley family. Uh, and again, you know, it's... Freeman, welcome aboard, but we missed you.
I can understand.
You got some big shoes to fill, buddy.
Instead of me, to be honest with you.
Yeah, but, uh, just thank you for letting me be a part of that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Camardi.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. First, I would like to, uh, and I'm, I'm gonna defer to Mr., I'm gonna defer to my chairperson, because I know he probably has, uh, received a lot more calls and input and things relating to the closing and opening of the schools and the schedule and all that. So I'm, I'm, I'm really, I, I decided last night I would defer to my chairman. He and I have talked several times, and I know he has a, 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 a strong opinion about, uh, the schools. I'm not gonna say anything much about that. I do, I will thank the Board of Education for, uh, taking another look at the schedule. And although it sounds like they've only agreed on two or three weeks, uh, I think that's designed to give them time to hear more from the public and to, uh, and to make it possible that our children would get their education in the safest way possible, and that's, that's what we're all after. Uh, Mr. Manager, I want to share something with you and Chip, and then get this as appropriate, share it with our board, our Director of the Health Department. I received a call from a Letizia Zavala, I think that's what it's pronounced. She is an active, uh, person down in the Dudley community with the Hispanic-Latino population. And she shared with me that one of her constituents down there had an, uh, uh, sounds like had a COVID opportunity. Probably not, I shouldn't have said opportunity, but anyway, uh, uh, and having gone to a couple of different doctors, and here's what the problem is. The language barrier is one part of it, but getting mixed messages from Goshen and then the Health Department as to when one could go back to work. Uh, uh, it has been said to me, it's some privacy, that some of our working population that does not understand English as well, as some of us try to, uh, that they get mixed messages. And when they call, they, they don't get a, a, a response that they can understand. I know you can't have interpreters on every line, but, uh, I would, I would love to know that our Health Department will work closely with any of the other health providers, so that whomever makes a decision about when someone is cleared to go back to work after having to be quarantined, it is, 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 is made to the advantage of the person who's seeking the information. Uh, I have one small, and I know this is part of HIPAA, because it's already been explained to me by, uh, one of the, and I won't call her name, because she may not want me to call her name, but someone at the Health Department that I talked to yesterday. I, I have a question that was personal, but I think it's a question that people who do things like I do, I, I, I prepare and rent houses to people. And I ran into a situation where someone moved out of one of my houses. And I, and, and here's my question. How... You gotta be careful when you rent to the next person, but because of some restrictions, a landlord can't even know if there was someone in that house who had a COVID episode. Who, who, you know, and, and, and somewhere along the way, I, I, nothing may not be able to be done, but I thought how, what a problem that puts a segment of our population in to do what I do, because number one, you would not want to expose a new group of people to an old germ. Although, uh, in my case, I'm still waiting to get a professional crew to clean the house, but I couldn't even get the information. Not, I would want to know who was there, or the name of the person, but if anyone was there. And maybe that would be something that, I really don't know how the Board of Health could solve that, except that I just wanted to bring that out as a problem that faced me, and, uh, and, uh, it, it has to be a concern for other people who do, who, who, who do rentals and so forth and so on, because we all want to be as careful as possible. I, I guess that's what I just wanted to get out there on the table. Thank you, sir.
Yes. Commissioner World, uh, we, you are, we, we like, like you sitting on our board, but I also want you to know also, we, we miss Commissioner Bell.
We gotta understand.
We, we always will. Uh, the ones that we have lost on this board, for whatever reason, will always be remembered, uh, by this board. But yes, we're, we're thankful that you're here, uh, but you're, you're filling this, you're filling some big shoes also.
Yep.
So your comments, sir?
Uh, I don't have any.
Okay, thank you. I guess I did them forward, I did them forward. Okay. All right, Mr. Page.
Nothing but a session.
I suppose I, um, sometimes bark up the, I'm accused of being someone that tilts at windmills. But folks, I'm telling you, I really am being more and more perplexed. Let me be the, uh, uh, one of the lone voices in the wilderness crying out for small business owners. Can you imagine investing your life savings into a business, operating it, and all of a sudden comes along COVID-19, and the government states you've got to close down in April? And somehow or another, you're supposed to keep your business operating in April, May, June. June goes by, July goes by. I mean, four months, oh, five months. Then you have an announcement that, hey, we're gonna continue on and have you stay closed almost half a year. I saw on television yesterday where, uh, one of those restaurants that had tried and struggled as best they could to combat it, um, finally, one after another are closing up. You cannot pull away the revenue stream from business and expect them to complete, continue to employ people, pay the rent, pay the electricity, pay the overhead without any income coming So, my concern is that if you in fact can wear a mask and walk into Walmart, you ought to be able to walk into Joe's Dress Shop, or Suzie's Dress Shop, and also buy a dress. I don't see where the difference is. So for small business men and women throughout Wayne County and North Carolina, I just say that, uh, God bless you. I hate to see what the devastating it is paying or coming about for your family. And I would only hope that our, uh, decision makers would recognize that. There has got to be a sensible way to allow us to operate our businesses, and at the same time have reasonable protocols in place to protect, uh, the public. Now let me talk about protecting the public. Look at the stats, Google it when you get out of here, and you will find that close to 50%, if not more, of the deaths attributed, as well as those affected seriously, are those people that are above the age of 65. I'm in that category, but it's above 65. Now, the next thing that I'm concerned about is all these astronomical numbers that are coming about in regards to our testing. We're not testing those that are showing symptoms, we're just testing. But do recognize when you test, I sound like my president, when you test, you're gonna get more positives. But here's the question that I have. Out of the positives, how many of those have any symptoms? I was blown away when we, we got the first report in regards to, what was the number? 500 and some odd prisoners out here at the prison that had been tested positive, but out of those, 90 some odd percent had no symptoms. They didn't even know they had it. Aren't we doing the same thing here? People ha, are being tested, and they have no symptoms, and they test positive. So are they... I better hush. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
I'll end it.
I, um, I just have a couple of things. Well, what's happened is, is that all this stuff has turned into politics, that's the problem, with COVID-19, all of it. So, we're gonna have to wade through and do the best we can by using common sense that we have. On the county level, we, as you know, there's a lot of changes going on, uh, with the Wayne County Development Alliance, and of course, uh, with the global transport, um, that, there's a lot of things that we have to consider as commissioners for the future. And I'm real concerned about what, over the last three or four weeks, about businesses. And you're right, Commissioner Daughery, you don't have to be a small business, you know, small business and large business. We've, we've, we've got two, and I will not call their name, but we've got two that we know of here in Wayne County that's gonna cease operations. And I'm, I, I'm, I'm concerned about the trickle-down effect, because the longer we keep businesses closed, the longer the restrictions keep going, businesses are not gonna be able to survive. But yet, it's a proven fact, when you Google it, that with, with, with the restrictions in place, there's really no difference in the deaths, if you do it the right way. There's states out there that have never even closed down, period, and they're showing, they're showing positive results. They're already over the COVID, so it's all turned political. I guess I have, uh, something that is really trivial that I want to bring up in, in what we're facing today, but I've got to do it, because I am getting, and a lot of commissioners, most of us have gotten, calls and text messages for years about, uh, newspapers being thrown in our driveways. Have y'all not got it?
Oh, yes.
Commissioners? Yeah, if y'all got complaints from people that the New Yorkers are throwing these things out, they're accumulating. I'm getting one a week, and sometimes two a week. We have done a lot of things as, on the commission board to try, to work with the New Yorkers to try to, the people that don't want these newspapers, they shouldn't have to put up with the, with the newspapers in their driveway, in their ditches. I want to share one text message with you, and I'm gonna call the New Yorkers out to a certain degree for this reason. We don't have any power as commissioners, the law doesn't have any power, they're actually not littering, according to my understanding, but the New Yorkers needs to take a grip on this. Let me share this one. It says, "Is there anything we can do to stop New Yorkers from throwing out papers on Highway 70 where I live and have rental property? I've called the paper. I've asked the paper guy not to leave papers. It's bad enough that they will not stop. I've called. It goes along for a month or so, and then it's right back. It's bad enough that, uh, with the weeds growing up on the rightways on Highway 70, but we don't need the added litter of the paper that no one wants." What's happening? Whenever someone calls the New Yorkers and they say, "I don't want this paper dropped in my driveway," and it goes on for a month, and they don't get it, and all of a sudden they get it again, what's causing that? Is it because that they, you may have a new carrier, and they don't know? New Yorkers needs to help us as county commissioners, keep our county looking good. What's happening is, is that one person texts me a few weeks ago and said, in front of his home, because he don't pick them up, or he don't do anything, there's nine newspapers laying in the ditch. So I'm just asking the New Yorkers publicly to help us to keep our county looking good, not to litter, because most of these newspapers, as you know, mine does, ends up in a landfill. But the citizens, whenever they call, the residents call, and they say, "Look, my address is such and such and such, and this is my name." They should ne, not have to keep calling back to have this thing canceled again. And so, having said that, I don't know if I'm on the good side of the New Yorkers or the bad side, but the key is, is that, well, the, I'm, I'm tired of getting these, these text messages and so forth that we've been getting all these years. And I think according to, uh, according to our attorney, there's really not a lot we can do legally, you know? I mean, uh, they're, they're not breaking any laws, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
So, their cooperation is what I'm asking for. It's that if they do change carriers, or whatever the reason is, when a person calls, they should make some kind of arrangements, no matter who the carrier is, to have a list of these addresses, whether it's on an iPad or whatever, so these people don't get bombarded every month or so. So having said that, I guess I'm done. Unless any of you other commissioners have anything to say about that situation.
It's an old can of worms.
It is. It is.
So let me get this straight. Uh, the New Yorkers is gonna take shots at you, and the governor's gonna take shots at me. Have a good day.
Well, hey, we tried everything else, haven't we? Okay, any, does any-
Don't reply to any-
Just don't reply to any emails.
Does anyone, any commissioners have anything else that you'd like to bring up at this time? Okay?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We go back and close session.
Okay, we have a closed session. All in favor of a closed session, raise your right hand, please. Okay, Mr. Attorney, for what reason?
Those would be for the same reasons as before. That'd be to consider the qualifications, competence, and performance of three-year employees, to discuss matters relating to location or expansion of the industries in the area, and to consult with your attorney in order to preserve attorney-client privilege.
Okay, we are in closed session. Thank y'all for coming.